How are you? Yes, sir. We have council member Enmeyer, council member Loffler, and Mayor Protem Noblock joining us as our invited guests. That's the structure. It's really a planning commission meeting, but due to the nature of this important item, the council's been invited, three are here tonight to participate and listen in on all of the activities tonight. So that's the structure, and that's why the planning commission is on the dais and running the meeting. I want to welcome everybody here to this community meeting. The purpose of this community meeting is for us to listen, and that's what we've been doing since 5:00 tonight with our other items, and I apologize that we ran late, so we're starting late. What I'd like to do, because we have been going since 5, and I know we're getting started late, is I would like to take a quick 10-minute break. But while we're doing that, what I'd like to do is, before we do that, is go over the process tonight and then let you guys know what you can be doing over the -- oh, you already have the speaker cards already filled out, okay? I was going to suggest you get your cards filled up, but you're a step ahead of me. So maybe we'll make it a five -- is a 5-minute break going to work for everybody? Okay. So we'll take -- here's what we're going to do. We're going to take a 5-minute break. Then when we return, we're going to ask our city professional staff to provide us with their presentation on this agenda item, and then we're going to immediately go into public comments. We're not going to open it up to questions. We're going to go directly to public comments because this is about listening to you tonight. Once we've gone through everybody, then at the end, if there's discussion or comments or questions that council members or commissioners want to make or talk with staff, it'll happen after the public comments. Does that work for everybody? Does that work for you guys as well? Okay. And then I want to underscore that because this is a community meeting and the purpose is to listen to the public comments, there's going to be no action taken. There'll be no votes. There'll be no motions. There'll be no decisions. Tonight is to hear you. That's the point of the meeting, is to listen to the public after we've heard from the staff, and then we're going to wrap up the meeting. So just so everybody's clear, no decisions are going to be made tonight. So thank you in advance for being here, and your speaker cards. We're going to take a 5-minute break, and then we'll get right into it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Maybe someone in the room there can turn the volume up a little bit. Is that better? Okay, they got the word in the back. Great, thank you. Okay. I'm not going to repeat what I said. Glad you're here, and we're going to get to you in just a minute. We have a lot of cards, and we're anxious to hear everybody's perspective. But before we do that, the staff has prepared a presentation that I think would be appropriate to hear from the staff now, and so I'm going to turn it over to our city planner, which is Jonathan Lightfoot. He's here over here on my right. Jonathan, thanks.
Thank you, Chair Cosgrove, and planning commission and council members. This presentation, I'll be brief, but it's going to go over just an overview of permitting and that landscape in regards to wireless facilities. The first slide here just shows what every community is navigating. It's just a widespread and very rapid increase in the demand for wireless service, and we see that on the ground in terms of how many facility requests come in and where those facilities are. So some examples of existing facilities that are in San Clemente are shown in some of these images, different types of facilities around town. This is an example at San Gregorio Park where there's panel antennas directly attached to a light standard. This is a city-owned facility, Water Tower, where we have six or seven different antennas. Not all of them are for commercial communications. There's also emergency communications. There's radio broadcasts and others that are located at that location. This is a small cell or 5G installation that's directly attached to a street light pole. This is an example of a co-location. This is within a community here in San Clemente. On the left was the original tower, and to the right is the co-location where they're required to keep the same design of the facility, but it did increase the number of antennas. So hitting on the legal framework that the city of San Clemente and other cities have to navigate in permitting these types of facilities starts at the top with the federal government and the Telecommunications Act of 1996. That act tasked the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, with regulating wireless facilities, and within that also setting standards for radio frequency. And that act also expressly prohibits cities from evaluating or considering RF within environmental analysis. Later on, we have the Spectrum Act, and the intent of this act is to advance wireless broadband service for public safety and commercial purposes. It requires city approval of any eligible facilities request, and EFR is something that is a co-location of new transmission equipment. It could also incorporate the removal of existing transmission equipment or the replacement. This section does pretty expressly limit cities in what we can do through that permitting process. We're prohibited from regulating the placement, construction, and modification of wireless facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency if the facilities comply with FCC standards. These two federal standards also introduce a concept called shot clocks with a number of different applications that the city goes through. There's not prescribed timelines. The city can issue incomplete letters regularly while we work through specifics of design and goals to align with our general plan. We don't have the same flexibility with timing when shot clocks are at play with the FCC standards here. The typical shot clock is 60 days. These are just some zoning code references. I won't go into too much detail, but broadly, there are a number of different paths that permits for wireless facilities can go through, depending on whether the facility is a new macro tower, an existing facility, or a small cell facility, and whether those facilities are on city property or private property. So this is just a graphic. There's a decision tree essentially that these types of applications would have to go through. So clearly, there's a lot of interest at one facility in particular. That's at 616 Del Dios in Rancho San Clemente. This is a macro facility. The original approval was granted by the County of Orange in 1962 for a microwave relay station, and the recent discussion over this item really began in 2019 when there was a co-location that was denied by the city. That kicked off some back-and-forth discussions on that specific tower. The denial was related to it being over height and city staff recognizing that the current height was not consistent with that 1962 approval. So earlier this year, 2023, the city did issue a permit to return the tower to its approved height at 70 feet. There is a separate building permit request to co-locate dish wireless antennas on that facility. So this text is a little bit small, but I'll read portions out for those who can't see it clearly. On the left, I have things that the city can do. On the right, things that the city cannot do. So what the city can do is enforce existing CUP conditions. We can review building permits for structural safety. We can require an RF safety report, which demonstrates compliance with the FCC standards, and we can enforce nuisance issues at the property. What we cannot do for a co-location is conduct a public hearing to take a discretionary action. We cannot add conditions beyond the existing CUP, and we cannot deny co-locations that meet FCC criteria. So that concludes the staff presentation. I do want to add to that that we are certainly cognizant of the concerns of the community, and this is one of those types of permits. There's a few that come through that we wish we had more control and discretion over, but after reviewing the relevant legal framework, it seems like there's a very clear direction that the city's precluded from that type of discretionary action in this case. And so being a co-location request, a building permit, is the path that this is on trajectory for. That 60-day shot clock does expire very soon. That's going to be on Monday. There is case law related to this where even if the city denies or does not issue a permit, the case law says that those types of facilities will be deemed granted at that point. So at that point, the city permit is essentially irrelevant. And so I just want to be direct in acknowledging what that timeline looks like, what the path is that's in front of us. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, Jonathan. Thank you for that report. I think the best thing to do at this time is really to turn to members of the public that have come tonight to speak and open that process up and invite public comment at this time. We have quite a few speakers, so as you all know, or maybe some of you don't, there is the 3-minute time limit, which is not just a courtesy so we can get to everybody, but it's also fairness. Everyone gets the exact same amount of time. You're not obligated to use the whole 3 minutes, by the way, but that's the time that everyone will get. We have our recording clerk here, Tamara, and she, I think you're going to read the names and maybe call the first three or four up? Okay, great.
So the first three, and if you'll please line up along the wall over on that behind me. We have Emily Murray and Alan Mattkins. They're both on the same speaker card. And Vani Barnes.
So if we could just, as your name is called, maybe queue up over here, and then I'll go ahead and have you come up, and then just be ready, and then just the next one come up, and we'll just keep it moving. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Can I get one definition before we start? Does co-location mean a secondary company wants to come in and locate an antenna where somebody already has it? What's co-location?
Yeah, that's a good question. Co-location is referred to as a facility that is placed on an existing tower, so it doesn't necessarily mean that there's another antenna on that tower already, but it means that it's a new panel going on to an existing tower.
Yeah, something that is a little new, because I had indicated to the staff, you know the little timer with the lights? That number that counts down is almost impossible to see, so they've put it on the screen there. So hopefully, that'll be a good reference point, too. So welcome, and please go ahead.
Thank you, and I won't be up here for 3 minutes. Good evening. My name is Emily Murray. I'm with the law firm, Alan Mattkins, so there aren't two of us, and I represent American Tower, which is the owner of the facility and the property at 616 Del Dios that we heard about this evening. So I just wanted to introduce myself and thank you all for your time and attention this evening.
Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate that.
Hello, Chair Cosgrove, members of the commission, staff. My name is Mike Blackwell. I'm a resident here in San Clemente.
And a former planning commissioner.
Former planning commissioner, yes. It was a great time in my life. I was proud to serve this community. We didn't get a lot of wireless projects like this, unfortunately. Unfortunately, I think. So you're going to hear a lot of testimony tonight, and you've received a lot of information via email about the rules that apply to telecom and some perspectives and opinions on the current case, example that staff has referenced tonight. I'm here just to really keep it short and sweet, but I wanted you to be aware of some of the things that are in play here, and that is that dish wireless isn't necessarily the bad guy here. You know, they're taking advantage of provisions that have been summarized by staff, and that's fine for a use that is important. We all need it. We all use it, and they've got to go somewhere. But the issue here is that when we build upon paper structures or paper foundations, we end up with something at the end that isn't stable, and it appears that this use permit was established for wireless telecommunications use and may have been abandoned at some point in time. We also know that the tower was built out of conformance, which made it not only a legal nonconforming because it was above the height for the zone, as well as our current height standards, but it was built above that, up to a height of like 150-something feet. This tower existed without a tenant for a very long time. Both the County of Orange and the City of San Clemente have standards on abandonment. So when a use is established and that use is abandoned for a period of time, it's no longer a valid use. So why are we building on an invalid use to begin with? So everything that's been referenced in terms of privileges under 6409, it's great. Those privileges exist, but only if certain criteria is met under the eligibility rules. And in this case, we didn't have a legal facility there. We didn't have a legal structure. So why are we building on this? And there's so much more to talk about. I don't have the time here, but you're going to hear plenty, so I just wanted to put that out there for you. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you, and thank you for your past service. Do we have our next batch of speakers?
Vani's coming up.
Okay. Why don't you call the next couple names while she's coming up, please?
Bert Levesque, Steve Lawson, and Dave Armstrong.
Council, commissioners, city manager, and staff. I'm Vani Barnes, RSCA Board President. The first slide is American Tower should be penalized for violating the use The first slide is American Tower should be penalized for violating the use permit for 62 years, including height, fence, grounds, and roadway maintenance. Do FCC mandates nullify the hillside ordinance in our specific plan and city code? Do federal mandates exempt American Tower from maintaining the fire zone around the structure like they have? Why is American Tower to be rewarded for decades of non-compliance? Allowing foxes to guard the hen house only invites other companies to do the same. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. There have been up to 10 fires along the ridge line in the last decade. Two were very near the tower site. Last year's rain events produced shrubs at least 20 feet high in the tower's defensible fire zone that they don't maintain. The lack of maintenance has greatly increased the risk of fire for nearby residents and homes. Slide three, please. This is the 100-foot fire zone around the tower structure, the building. Effective 2010, PRC 4291A, is the state mandate that requires businesses in fire-prone areas to maintain the fire zones around their structures. American Tower has not responded to Master Association certified notices from our attorney, nor have they complied with the state mandate, although they were seen scrambling up there today at the last nanosecond. Slide four, please. Fires from artillery practice have spread to the ridge line from Camp Pendleton numerous times. Last week's Halloween fire has been updated from 1,200 acres to 4,000 acres of burned open space, just last week. Every year, Camp Pendleton has an average of 300 wildfires, and last year, over 24,000 acres were burned. Yesterday, Farmers Insurance found, joined Allstate and State Farm, who will no longer renew policies for homeowners in California. I sent you the article today. And the last slide again, please. So we've got the foxes. What is the city going to do to safeguard our homeowners from the foxes in the hen house? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Evening, Bert Lavesk, HOA, Harborview Estates, President of the Board. I'm in the development construction business, and one of the things that came to mind when we first started getting involved with this was discovering that there was no permit issued for this tower that we can find. We've requested it from the City of San Clemente and the County of Orange. There's no certificate of occupancy for this tower. So if you didn't know that that tower existed, on paper, it does not exist. So I'm asking the city to prove that it does exist on paper. Period. Second question is, if it does exist, every resident in this city, if they modify a structure, have to provide the previous documents to show what it was built under and bring it up to current code. So unless you have those drawings and have the permitted drawings and show that it's been modified and that it meets current code, why was a permit even issued to make the modification? So my point in this, and there'll be other points made behind me, but the point I want to make in this three minutes I have is, where does that information exist? There was no permit for that tower to begin with. There is no record of a C of O for that tower. So on paper, again, what are we building on? Back to Mike's point, it's a paper foundation. So regardless of any FCC regulations, why is the tower even there? And how did we get to the point where it was modified, where it's a safety hazard within hundreds of feet of residences, not to mention people climbing the thing on a regular basis, without any verification that it's even to code? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Tamara, do you want to, while the next person's coming up, maybe read off the next couple names, please?
We have Dave Armstrong, Joel Rummerman, and Dolly Erickson.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. My name is Steve Lawson, LAWSO, and I'm also...
Do you have slides, please?
Pardon? That's okay. They're not there. You can put them up, but it's okay. The slides are just the pictures of the existing facility. My name is Steve Lawson, again. So I'm an electrician by trade. I've actually been in the business and in the trade for about 46 years. Been a resident of San Clemente for 27 years. We moved down here into the community at the very beginning. I reviewed the drawings. I went through everything that the planning commission had that was online and available. The existing CUP that they're piggybacking off of was issued to AT&amp;T as a microwave relay station in an A1 agricultural district. Originally, that type of microwave station was used by TRW and possibly the military, and is obviously, in the 1962, there was no cellular technology or devices existed. The once-remote location in that A1 agricultural district is no longer the case, so how can it be changed to a wireless communications facility, as the city agreed to in the voluntary compliance agreement on July 6? The current drawings, again, I went through them. I'm pretty familiar with drawings. I've done it many years. Do not reflect what the OCFA terms as the stationary battery storage system per their G10 guidelines as being existing within the facility, nor new added to the project to provide any backup power in the event of an SCE outage. Per the FCC guidelines, all cell towers are required to have this. However, nothing is shown, and in fact, no circuitry load calculations are provided for any of the existing electrical infrastructure within the facility. Typically, a one-line drawing is provided for all electrical. That includes panel schedules, loads, everything for the entire system. However, none of this is provided or depicted in the current plans that have been submitted, and that should have been a plan check correction item. My next point is, is the existing building structure itself that is part of the 1962 CUP and complies with all the current building codes and capable of a two-hour rating, including any active fire suppression system in the event of a fire in the facility? Since the facility is not occupied, is there a type of fire notification system with the central monitoring station connection that will notify the OCFA in the event of a fire within the facility? Nothing is shown. Okay, I'm done. I guess I'm done, guys. Thank you.
Welcome. This is my third time speaking. David Armstrong, part of the board of this association, and had the privilege to meet with Adam and Jonathan on Monday as well. So I'm not going to state any more questions or facts. I'm just going to give a story, actually a story about today of the tower. One of my colleagues and homeowners asked me to come up and see what was going on today. We've seen a lot of activity in the last two or three days in this facility. And I went up there, and I met with one of the American Tower employees doing some work on this actual location. And it turns out, and I have this on record, I'm happy to share this with you, as well as some documents later in writing, that there was no meter on this property, as well as also basically no antenna. And on record, this employee said that as of today. So one of my questions, or maybe one of my challenges, I would love to have Adam or Jonathan or somebody responsible for this project in the city to just go out there before Monday and look at this and actually confirm that, because I was there today. And I have this employee on record stating that. So the other thing I wanted to mention is, we've had many, many trucks, many vehicles come through our association, our property illegally as well. There is an easement, but the easement says they need to go around. They go right through our property, and one of which, a few weeks ago, was actually the power company. There's no address at this property either, so they're obviously trying to get power now. So the argument around abandonment definitely, I think, is still relevant in this situation, and I would challenge the city to actually, before Monday ideally, go actually review that project again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tamara, can you call the next couple speakers?
Tina Johnson, Fraser Moran, and Sean Nelson.
Thanks. If you heard your name, if you want to start making your way up here, that'd be great. Sir, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Joel Rummerman. I represent, in one of the aerial shots earlier tonight, there was a couple houses within that 100-foot circle, or right around the edge of it. I'm one of those two in the top right corner. So I'm like the closest resident, debatable, you know, over there, a couple more. So thanks for hearing us tonight. I think kind of my perspective, I won't repeat a lot of the stuff. There's a lot of stuff that even I'm learning about tonight, actually a ton of stuff regarding codes and FCC and things along those lines. I think my point tonight is kind of the nuisance aspect of that tower. It was listed on the left side of one of your slides earlier, Mr. Lightfoot. With regards to like children or young adults going ahead and climbing that tower, we were joking earlier how often we're in our backyards yelling at folks who are climbing this tower. You know, hey, like, don't be an idiot, get down, stuff like that. And so sometimes they listen, sometimes they don't, sometimes they argue with us, sometimes we threaten to call the police, things along those lines. So I think that as we go ahead and think about the liability to the city, the liability to even ATC regarding having this structure in place, I think there is significant liability there, whether it's not ATCs or the cities. It's something we need to go ahead and consider as we go ahead and consider to add on to this and continue to go ahead and grow with it. So I think that that is something that we need to consider, and I think it's important that we go ahead and probably not go ahead and continue to progress in this area. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Dolly Erickson. I live in Rancho, down the street from the tower. I have nine grandkids, and that's our family legacy, that property, and we're very happy to be there. I was aware of an article that was written on the 3rd of October regarding the FCC fining Dish Network for not properly taken care of their, an old abandoned satellite. It's too close to Earth, and my point is, with the nuisance thing, how do we know if that's the first person who has asked to have their stuff there? How do we know that they're not going to be leaving things laying around that will impact our family's legacy and be an eyesore, a nuisance, and a dangerous thing? They're already in trouble for $150,000. It's the first fine the FCC has slapped on a company. I would ask you to put the wireless stuff somewhere else where there is a facility that's already been approved and ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Tina Johnson. I live at 503 El Circulo, and I do see kids climbing that tower at least, I want to say every, well, every other week, maybe once a month. And I feel like it's a health risk, too, for our children, living so close and being in real estate, working for Coldwell Banker. I do believe it lowers the home value of our homes and the fire risks. I'm just, I'm here to learn, to listen, and let you know that I'm definitely concerned, and I wish we would not have it. I wish it was dismantled, because, you know, like I said, there's a lot of kids that go up there and shoot off fireworks from there, and so I would rather have it not in our neighborhood at all. So thank you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Tamara, can you call the next three, please? Just one minute. Thank you.
Ben Steves, Susanna Cortini, and Kristi Bundy.
Thank you. Okay, please. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Fraser Moran, and I live at 406 El Guaylo.
So when you're ready, then we'll start your time. We're ready now. Okay.
So in June 2017, the Christina's Fire burned right up to the ridge line trail, and my house faces the ridge line trail. Embers were falling in my backyard this night, so Engine 63 spent the night in my backyard watching the embers, making sure they didn't catch anything on fire or that it would spread. There was 200 firefighters, a DC-10, that were deployed to fight this fire. If the wind would have shifted, it could have been disastrous. And I'm just here to say that putting a tower like that in a severe fire danger area, it's designated severe fire danger, would just be really negligent, and that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi, how are you guys? My name's Sean Nelson. My address is 302 Paseo Pinto. I just used Google to figure out how exactly far my house is from it. It's 150 yards. I've got four kids under the age of nine. I've got a nine, an eight, a seven, and a four-year-old that are always outside playing. So I'm not the only one with kids in our little cul-de-sac. There's, you know, at least four other kids within very close proximity of this. We didn't ask for this tower. We didn't ask you to add anything to this tower. I'd appreciate it if you guys would try to find a way out of getting this tower mobilized. I'm a first responder. I'm fairly familiar with radio communication, and even for radio communication with the stuff that I do, they try to not have us be in close proximity to the major cell networks, the towers, and all the other stuff. They put that stuff very far away, and then we use our little handhelds, because the power's so much lower. But having it be that close to my kids is obviously a large concern for me, and that's pretty much why I'm here.
All right, thank you very much. Sir, come on in. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Ben Stevens, and I'm a neighbor of Sean's. So kind of in conjunction with what he's saying, I kind of have the same feelings about it. I worry about all the noise issues. I worry about kids falling off the tower. I'm a healthcare provider, so obviously, I'm going to be concerned about not just the fires, but also the cell service and how much radiation's going to be emitted from it. So that's definitely a concern to me as well. That's pretty much my angle on it.
Good. Thank you very much for your comments. Tamara, can you call the next three?
Anne Carpenter, Andrew Morris, and Peter Brady.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. My name is Kristi Bundy, and I live at 606 Del Dios, probably about 200 to 250 feet from the tower site. And my backyard backs up. We have a good view of the tower there. And I just wanted to...
Can you hold on just one second? Tamara, do you mind resetting the clock there for us? There we go.
Okay, great. I just wanted to state that I feel the tower is very unsafe, and we've had to call the police numerous times, seeing kids and people up on the tower. We've seen them throwing beer bottles, pumpkins, throwing lots of things off the tower. It's a lot of nuisance going on on the tower at all hours of the night. And even after the tower was lowered, within this last month, we saw during the daytime, people throwing bricks off the tower. We saw somebody throwing bricks, had to call the police. And I just wanted to share that, you know, my husband and I are very concerned about the nuisance and the safety issues with the tower.
Yeah, thank you very much for your comments. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. I am Dr. Susanna Courtois. I've been resident of Harborview for the last 18 years. I am physician by training and hold master's and doctorate in pharmacology, toxicology, and neurosciences, being in biopharmaceutical and medical device industry, including those evaluating electromagnetic radiation-based devices for 33 years now. So I feel qualified and compelled, as a concerned citizen really, to share the serious risk that installation of wireless cellphone tower in the midst of our community, making any decision about permitting installation of such technologies in the midst of residential community will be, how would my grandmother would say, putting the bill without the waiter. So I will just summarize briefly. A substantial scientific and medical evidence indicating harmful effects of this radiation. For your reference, the FCC has been found liable legally in court that did not recognize and failed to disclose this harmful... legally in court, that did not recognize and fail to disclose these harmful effects and scientific evidence to the public. And it's a matter of time when they will have to, because they found, they were found liable in the court. So, the, I know that the health issues are like a boogeyman for the existing regulations, but have no illusion, this is going to be changed. And I want you to be proactively thinking about what kind of a decision you are agreeing to be made, in order to protect or harm your own citizens. Electromagnetic radiation has impact, fundamental impact on functioning of every cell in human bodies, cells of animals, insects, plants, all affected. It has a harmful effect, documented harmful effects on human health, and especially non-thermal side effects of electromagnetic fields, and electromagnetic radiation exposures are well documented. It's important to emphasize non-thermal, because FCC main argument is that only acute thermal effects are recognized as an adverse effect. And because of these towers are not next to the body, they have no biological, plausible biological effects. This is just scientifically and medically really not acceptable any longer. It's been maybe 40 years ago, when this evidence started being gathered, but not anymore. The harmful effects, in summary, include widespread neuropsychiatric effects, including depression, suicide, increased tendency for suicides, psychotic episodes, and things like that. Hormonal effects, especially infertility, especially male infertility. Heart effects impacting the electric-
Thank, thank you very much for your comments. We're going to have to take the next speaker, but, thank you.
Yeah. I will, just for your information, I have compiled comprehensive scientific report, and I would like to give you the official copy of that report as a record for-
The staff, I'm sure, will be happy to take that. Thank you very much. Tamara, can you call the next three names?
David Schick.
No, come on up. We're just calling the names.
Lindy O'Toole, and Ruth Spath.
Okay, great. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Anne Carpenter. I live in Harbor Ridge with my husband Phil, and Phil and I raised two sons in Harbor Ridge. And our younger son, George, now is a grown working adult in LA, and occasionally comes home on the weekends, and likes to entertain me with the things he did in high school. And, so, one of the things that several of you have mentioned so far is, he and his friends used to go up there after school and climb the tower. And I was shocked to hear this. At the time, I was a stay-at-home mom. I had no idea what they were doing, and that they were up on the tower. And, you know, I was scared to death that he could have fallen to his death. He told me they climbed way up high, and they did it more than once. So, I'd just like to add my story to some of the other stories, that this tower really doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood with a lot of kids and teenagers. We have a lot of teenagers in Harborview, so it, it doesn't belong there. It should be placed somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Pete Brady, thanks for having us. San Clemente resident for 32 years, original owner at 914 Rio Lindo, 23 years. I've got a direct line of sight for about 1,000 feet up to that tower. I support all the previous comments of my neighbors in this community, especially Suzanne Corittori. I think the health risks for radiation are real. I've shared some of my health concerns in private to my neighbors, and I won't air those out in public, but I'm highly concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I'm David Schick, and I live with my wife, who's over here, at 305 Paseo Pinto, and we are, I don't know, 400 feet, 500 feet, maybe, from the antenna. And I would, too, like to go on record as supporting all of my neighbors. And I think what you've heard is pretty ample evidence that at least this project should be reviewed. Not that anybody did anything wrong, but it certainly seems like there's ample opportunities to go back and revisit what has happened here, because it would certainly make sense, it's common sense, that something went wrong. There's laws that have been passed to make sure that everybody has cell service and high-speed internet. However, there's also common sense laws that we need to follow to make sure that we don't fall into something in a situation that we've got here. These big, huge, large antennas, which we've never even seen a picture of what's been proposed, because this streamlined process doesn't even allow us to. Those small, tiny, little antennas that you showed us are nothing like what we're going to get up there. So, what I've learned, though, from all of this, is my insurance could potentially be a risk. I've already been denied because of the fire risk of being up there. Now having another facility that essentially is, is another risk to starting a fire could potentially raise my insurance. We've heard that property values are affected. Would you want something like this in your backyard that would lower your property value by 20% if you've taken a second on your, on your mortgage, and you're automatically going to be underwater? You can say it's somebody else's problem, but the way the comps work is, everybody's properties are eventually going to get lowered, because our comps feed into your comps, and you go get refinanced, and they're going to use my house, which is under an antenna that should have never been installed there, and everybody's going to suffer. As far as the health risk, you know, I'm an engineer, and I would have been of the opinion that, you know, these things, the government's looked out for us. But why would there be such opposition to 5G out there? This thing was rolled out at LAX, and the pilots wouldn't even land the airplanes. So why in Boyle Heights are they trying to get fiber installed? This is Boyle Heights. This is nothing like San Clemente. We're not this kind of a city. So what were the alternatives? So, in conclusion, I'd just like to say, I think you've heard ample evidence that this project should just be at the least reviewed, and potentially challenge what you've been told about this streamlined approval process.
Thank you very much. Tamara, can you call the next three? Okay, call them all.
Hello.
Just one, just one sec, please.
Next on the list is John Savas, Lindsey Spath, Courtney Morrow, and Norman McLeod.
Thanks. Okay, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a slide also, if you guys can put that up.
Oh, let, give, give them a minute to call up your slide, then.
Perfect.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ruth Spathy. My husband and I have been residents of San Clemente for over 35 years. In those three years, and, and out of those 35 years, three of them have been in the community of Harborview Estates. Within those 35 years, we've also been very active in getting city officials elected, as well as attending many city council meetings to share our concerns on various topics. The past three days, another neighbor and I walked door-to-door and were able to collect close to 100 signatures opposing the cell tower. As we approached the neighbors on this topic, many were not able to attend but sign the petition because they were very concerned about the way the city has handled this issue. Their understanding, as well as ours, was that the cell tower was being dismantled permanently, when they saw the construction equipment taking it down. Unfortunately, there is nothing from the city that informed any of us of anything different. Even though these names are only signatures, they are real people who care and deserve the respect that we all do from the city. We want our questions and our voices heard regarding this serious issue and objectives. This is only the beginning of our signature drive, and we really appreciate you guys hearing us and allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Come on up. Yes. Welcome to our meeting.
I think I have slides.
Did you have slides, too?
I do. I'm Lindy O'Toole. Oh, do you want Lindsey next? Oh, okay, that's fine.
Tamara, who, who?
Actually, Jonathan, Jonathan's next.
Okay, hi. My name is John Savas. I've been a resident of Rancho San Clemente for 28 years, and I frequently use the Ridgeline Trail right there. I guess, my biggest disappointment, even being here tonight, is that the first time I heard about a 5G tower going in was yesterday, when Ruth had left a note on my door. And, you know, I read the San Clemente Times every week, and I heard about the tower coming down, but I never heard, oh, there's a 5G going in there. So I've been given a lot of prepared remarks here with a lot of legal things in here, but basically, what I've been given, it talks about that there's no evidence of a legal approval being provided by the applicant, a building permit or a certificate of occupancy is unable to be produced by American Tower by FOAI records request within the city and county. There, it seems like the applicant's relying on a 2016-17 outdated Omni antenna permit approval, and there's no certificate of occupancy on record at the city, and that the owner and applicant can provide, they have not been providing that information. So I guess there's, from my point of view, a lot of unanswered questions. Here are the 5G towers going in three, four days before the big deadline comes in, and this is the first time I'm hearing about it. That, that seems wrong. If this is going to happen, it should be a community involvement. We ought to be looking at alternatives, and really understanding what the impacts are to fire, wildlife, everything else that everybody's brought up here. So, I feel like this one got kind of snuck under the rug on us, and I'm a little disappointed, honestly.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name's Lindsey Spathie. I'm a 35-year resident of San Clemente, and honored to be here tonight to present. You know, you council, city council members have the fiduciary responsibility to really represent the health, safety, and well-being of the city, of the citizens of the city who voted you in the positions you now fill. And we're looking now to you for representation and communication versus empowerment to special interest groups who want to incur economic gain by going through a backdoor to avoid proper due diligence process and consensus and buy-in from, from the community that, that you all serve. I'm still not sure why this, we're now reeling on our back of our heels. We've got five days before a decision is going to commence, and I still don't understand why the city manager and city attorney have chosen to unilaterally ramrod this issue by us. But it's really up to you to change the trajectory of their course of action. Therefore, I and we appeal to you, to each of you, to do the right thing by putting this process on immediate hold, in order to provide both you and us as citizens, the right to, to do due diligence, and to undergo respective, evaluate respective compliance and CUP issues, and to provide, to provide a subsequent public hearing to the constituencies, so that we can actually air our, our opinions, and to hear from you. To do otherwise, I believe it's a dereliction of duty, and a, by turning your backs on those who not only voted you in office, but to those whom you've sworn oath to represent. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Morrow. I live at 615 Del Dios. This application, this applicant's at 616. This is very close to my home. This is a very intimate topic for me. I was here in 2019. I spoke to the dais. I asked the council to please look into this abandoned tower and get this taken down. That is in the record, alongside Vani Barnes and our HOA president, Bert Levesque. This is nothing new. In 2019, I received in writing from the city that this tower was not eligible under Section 6409, when I asked for specifically what you used as a grounds for denial for this particular eligible facilities request. The city had said it was never an approved cell site, so it does not qualify as a modification to a cell site. A private nuisance is an unreasonable and unwarrantable, or unlawful use by an individual of his own property, so as to interfere with the rights of others. Enjoyment of life means living free of fear of potential impacts to human health and property value without concern to agency preemptions, to enjoying our home in a neighborhood that is free from disruptive views, view of incompatible and unsightly uses and structures, and being free from a deprivation of the intended visual character and man-made natural balance of the area. There is nothing natural about this tower. It is massive. It is ugly. It's been non-conforming for years, and there is not even evidence that this was built legally, as the applicant cannot provide proof of a building, proof of a certificate of occupancy or a building permit, which was required in the 1962 zoning code of the county of Orange. So this is nothing that was, oh, that was back in the 60s. No, they required it at that time, too, and no one has been able to provide that. The burden of proof lies on the applicant, American Tower, not on us residents. But to that end, we have continued to provide the city many evidence of, of facts and questions that should definitely give the city pause to question whether or not this even is subject to Section 6409, to ask whether, if there was an ongoing right of the property owner to maintain a tower without a legal telecom tenant, as well as a structure that was not its legal height limit, or potentially even legal at all, for so many years, was not a deprivation of these things, is equivalent to not caring at all. And here we are, just paving the way for them. You know, this is, this is outrageous. I contacted the city about this in June. It's been six months. Okay, I saw them drilling and extending fiber down my street, 10 yards, and grounding it. When we asked what they were doing, they said, oh, we're taking this fiber up. There's going to be an antenna on there. I reached out to the city manager. I reached out to council members. I reached out. They said, no, no, cell tower's going there. That was not, that was not truthful.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Thank you. Sir, welcome.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioner. Norm McLeod, Dish Wireless applaud staff for following suit to the EFR standards, and great presentation explaining co-location. That's the goal here for Dish Wireless. So by way of introduction, I'm here to work with staff, work with the commission, work with constituencies. If there's concerns, I'm here to address those. I want you to reach out to me if there's a question. I've spoken with Jonathan earlier today, and saying that there's going to be a lot of exchange of, you know, concerns and issues, and these are to be noted and to be addressed. So I'm here again to work with staff, work with our landlord, ATC as well, American Tower, to find out where we stand in this entitlement and permitting stand, stage of the permitting and the like. So, I'm here at your disposal. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our speakers. Do we have anyone else that wants to address the group? If you could just come forward with your card, give them to Tamara here, then she'll call you, and we'll, we'll, we'll get your comments. Sort of our last call here for comments. So, if you want to speak, please submit your card. Tamara, do you mind calling the names you just received?
Lindy O'Toole. Amanda Q.
I'm asking for an exception.
Just, just one second. Just let her call all the names.
Oh, I'm sorry. Martin, I didn't get the last name. Martin Doc, Doc? Okay, those were the three that I have.
Okay. Come on up. Welcome.
Before my time starts, I had submitted something 18 minutes past deadline, and there are three photos, and I'm asking for you to make an exception and show those. The reason they weren't on time was because I was calling Dave Armstrong, because there were people going up the, I thought they were trespassing at the thing, and it turned out that, lo and behold, it was American Tower trying to get some work done before this meeting, before I could take pictures of it. So, that's why I'm late in getting mine. So I would ask that you show my three slides, because it's really just slides that represent what's been going on in the neighborhood, and it's just all the rigs that have been there.
I'm going to have to, I mean, I'm not aware of the, this, this timing issue.
Yeah.
Um- Yeah, I'm going to look at the staff on this.
Staff, we do have the slides available. Jonathan had sent out an email to the planning commission and city council members with those slides indicating that per city council policy, per a city council policy, there is a noon deadline, but it's completely at the discretion of the study session participants.
Okay. The senses that I'm getting is, if you don't mind pulling those up, that, I think that's what, the sense that I'm getting.
I just wanted to give you a little peek.
Yeah. Let them have a few minutes, and then, are those your photos?
They are.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Okay. And you are, go.
Okay. This is the third time I've been up here. May I remind you that my name's Lindy O'Toole, and I am the closest, literally. I live to the left there of that. That's my son's red truck, and this is just a sampling of pictures, and I'm not really going to speak to them. I'm going to go ahead and say, just roll through them, because there's only three of them. But I work outside this window where I'm taking these pictures. It's quite distracting, and this is what's been going on. We can't move our cars often. This has been not just a nuisance and inconvenience, but I come to you because my mom was a breast cancer survivor, and at the same age that I am now, I was born in 1962. We've heard that year, haven't we, in this discussion? So I'm exactly as old as this first permit was built. A lot's happened in my lifetime. My mom is no longer with us. She did have breast cancer. I'm at the exact age that she's been diagnosed. I'm very concerned about the health risk, but how I would like to use the rest of my time is I've lived in San Clemente for over 20 years, and I'm very proud of San Clemente. And I want to thank so many of the people here that have taken my calls when things were going on in this neighborhood to try to help me figure out how to work within the rules and who I could call and how to do this in a nice way, because I'm usually a nice person. But there gets a point where nice doesn't work anymore. But in the spirit of being nice, I want to ask you guys, you have, this city has a mission and core values, and the mission is in partnership with the community that we serve, and this process has not been a partnership, not yet. Staff have excluded the community and ignored the real risks. The ATC has been your only partner so far. For core values, you claim that you seek win-win solutions, creatively pushing alternatives, yet you've never informed, asked, or even listened to the community until we push this, until we push this, to hear our, so we're still waiting to hear our win after partnering with the ATC. We haven't heard win-win yet. Part of it is, part of your website says that we operate honestly every day, yet this process was hidden from our community until we had to use the FOIA to uncover it in the 11th hour. We operate honestly every day. Doesn't feel like it. We do what is right, not what is easy. I think some mistakes have been made. They haven't been admitted to publicly. It's very clear to many of us in some private discussions that I will not repeat, but you know if you've had those private discussions. People on our end are saying, who's getting paid or who made the mistake? This is clearly not what your mission and core values represent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda, welcome.
Hello. My name's Amanda Quintanilla. I'm a San Clemente resident of over 50 years, and I've been very active in our community, speaking at the county level, TC board of directors meetings on the Senate floor for Senator Pat Bates, Senate bills. And I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. However, what I'm seeing here is that there have been so many wonderful speakers that spoke tonight and brought up very valid concerns, and I'm really disappointed in the fact that our city staff didn't do their due diligence to thoroughly inspect these plans or the lack of plans that were presented, the lack of transparency in our community. And, you know, I've spoken a lot for various issues around our town, whether it's Amazon warehouse going in by Rancho San Clemente, whether La Pata gas station, or the North Beach, North Beach problems down there and to have security. And this is something that our city should have been more proactive in having this meeting months ago or back in 2019. This is a problem where, thank you. And this is a problem, and this is a series of mistakes. And in a nursing field, the medical field, it should be called a sentinel event, because there's a series of mistakes where along the road, someone should have caught these errors. Someone should have gone thoroughly inspected this, and I'm really disappointed. Recently, the city manager sent me an email regarding another matter that, there was an article in the Voice of OC that our city was a very, or was number two of being a transparent city. But that's occurred, and I haven't read that article, but that's occurred because of so many people that have come to our city council meetings or board of directors meetings or beaches, parks, and recreation, or whatever commission or committee. We have fought for transparency. However, in this situation, here is a lack of transparency, and this is a prime example where our city didn't do its due diligence, and here are the publics. I think that, I think I've said all that I needed to say, but, and unfortunately, it is at the 11th hour, because there is a deadline on the 14th, and I think that we should do better. Our residents deserve better, and I hope to hear from the city manager. I hope he could speak tonight, and just hopefully that moving forward, that we need to do something. And whether there is an injunction we can do, we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Martin Doc at 816 El Barro. I have lived 26 years below that tower. I believe Lindsey and Joel are wrong. I believe I have the closest exposure to that tower. And, you know, I've been there since, you know, that neighborhood was built, and my wife is here, Carla, and we've been looking at the thing for 26 years. It's very ugly. And I actually learned for the first time tonight that things have been out of its permitted height for 26 years that I've been there. And I was actually very excited when I was in my backyard one day, seeing that the tower was being taken down. I was texting my kids. I was really excited. And then I received no information about what was going on with that tower, and then I found out they're going to put 5G in there. And that's just through neighborhood talk. I heard nothing from the city. And I just, the only thing I want to add to this is that ATC leases these towers to multiple companies. This isn't just going to be Dish Network. They're going to try to get four or five other companies up there and put 5G. So we're talking about something way more than just Dish Network. It's going to be AT&amp;T, it's going to be T-Mobile, all these companies, Verizon, because that's how they make money. They do this all over the country. So I'm hoping you'll fight for us.
Thank you so much for your comments. You want to submit a card? All right. Why don't you, welcome, and why don't you just do, introduce yourself?
Sure. Hi. Good evening. My name's Andrew Morrow. Thanks for hearing us all out today. I'm also a resident of Harborview. We live about 300 feet away. We're at 615 Del Dios. I'm a father of three, under the age of nine as well. There's a lot of children in our neighborhood, and this is causing a huge health concern, I know, for all the parents involved, especially with our little children. Not only is it our backyard, you know, literally, but it's also a highly trafficked area for access to the Ridgeline Trail. So mountain bikers, dog walkers, a lot of our neighborhood and other visitors access this area. So I think the access and the safety of the area, I think, should be more acutely looked at, given where it's located. I mean, we're being forced to move to protect our children. This is causing extreme stress and disruption and financial strain to our family. It's not only going to hurt our house value, but everyone in the neighborhood, I think, as a lot of the previous speakers have talked about. Outside of being a resident and a neighbor and a father, I'm a commercial real estate broker, so I'm pretty familiar with code, land use, CUPs, how this process works. And I think to Mr. Blackwell's initial point, this permit process was not processed properly. There's not due diligence and proper materials that the city or the county or anyone can produce. I have not heard from the city attorney once, despite countless emails and questions, and I've been at like six of these meetings, not heard one word, which is concerning. I've seen city lawsuits happen with property owners from afar, and I can tell you it's ugly. So I urge you to take the time, hit the pause button, and do your proper due diligence. The public nuisance thing has come up multiple times. I've brought up the fire concern multiple times. I've yet to see the fire department here, and I've yet to see a report from the fire department. I don't know if that's required in a new CUP and wasn't done, but I think that needs to be done for everyone's well-being and safety. I mean, there's a disaster on the front page every other day. We're all seeing and feeling the impacts of insurance. Insurance costs have gone up 30% in the commercial. We can't even get insurance as a homeowner now. So having this site and trying to change the use from what it was issued when it was surrounded by agricultural land now to surrounded by residential community does not make sense, and so it needs to be reexamined. If the surrounding use has changed, not to mention the existing use proposed on this site has changed, I still can't understand why this is just going through like it's a typical use for this area. So I know lots been said tonight. I think the themes continue. I'm not hearing a lot back, and it seems like the process is just moving forward to the detriment of the residents, to the homeowners, and to our families. And so I urge the council to do some more due diligence and engage us a little further in this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do you want to speak also?
Yes.
Okay, do you mind coming up? Did you, did she give you a card? Do you mind just, oh, you have your card. Can you just introduce yourself?
Oh, I did. Yeah, hello. My name is Emery Yakpot. I live in 810 El Barro, and my parents are not here tonight. My dad's away, and my mom is dealing with a house leak, but I just, I didn't even know I was going to speak today. I just got off work, which explains the outfit. But I'm glad I'm able to speak with my community and young adults, too, because I'm 26. And I didn't really care about a cellular tower at first until I moved here with my parents in about 2021, and just within a year, my mom got diagnosed with breast cancer. And that's a big concern, especially since I'm young. My mom's young. She's only fif, she was 50 at the time, right? And not even a year later, my neighbor, who's here with me tonight, also got diagnosed with breast cancer. And so the radiation is a big concern, knowing that even our phones that we carry with us can affect our health. And so I can, I'm a young person. I'm 26. I know the people that, or the kids that climb up that tower, and they're very loud, and they litter everywhere, and I know they smoke and they drink, and that alone is a hazard to us all. Every time, I walk the Ridgeline hike often, and usually after the holidays, especially Fourth of July, I would see bottles and trash everywhere, and that's not pretty. And San Clemente is known, to me personally, the prettiest Orange County city out there, and I want it to remain that way. And I would just hate that one day if we all walked that beautiful hike, we might see a memorial at the bottom, at the base of it, knowing somebody might have taken that, their life, because they've slipped or fallen. And so the health of the community is, sits heavily on my heart, and I really hope you all here today can change that, knowing that can be prevented with this conversation here today. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I believe that is everybody. Is that everybody? Oh, I want to, I want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to speak tonight. You were well organized, extremely articulate, fair questions, sincere. I think it took some courage and vulnerability to come and share your stories tonight and your concerns. And I know, speaking for all of us, it's really important that you did that. This is the public process, and hearing from the public is essential, and it doesn't work without you being here. And I know it took time and emotions to be here tonight, and I want to, on behalf of all of us, just thank you very much for being here and sharing your stories and your concerns. I see our city manager, Mr. Hall, standing there. Did you want to have an opportunity, did you want to speak and address the group, Mr. Hall? Yeah, absolutely. I think it's only fair, I mean, people have asked to hear from you, so, and I'm, thank you for being here tonight, and...
I didn't pull out a blue card here.
Okay. No, don't worry about it. You're okay. You're part of the staff. I think you're good.
Commissioners, council members, and most of all, community members, I appreciate, I know I'm kind of a latecomer to the game. I know this tower's been here for a long time, been a concern for a long time, and I've only been here for a few months, but I have appreciated being there a couple of times. Vani Barnes took me to that location, so I am familiar with it. I've seen it firsthand, and so I appreciate the time that she spent with me. Both the landlord and the applicant are here tonight, and even though we work under a shot clock, I think that they've heard some community concerns that we could certainly meet with and see if we couldn't address some of those concerns. Now, I think that there's a possibility that we can address many of the things that we've raised tonight, but we would ask if they would voluntarily, in fact, we sent an email yesterday, seeing if they would toll the shot clock so that we could address some of the concerns that we were going to hear tonight. And I would hope that, and I implore and maybe even encourage them to come in and address the commission and let us know if they would give us some time to address some of the concerns of the residents. Remember, my job as appointed by the city council is to watch out for the health, safety, and welfare of this community, and it starts with the residents. I want to find a way to do that. I understand, I think that there were some comments made tonight that were very salient and very important. I understand that we all rely on this technology. I know it's important for even our national defense to be able to communicate, whether that is storms, Amber Alert, a lot of things that we take advantage of with these technologies, and that's great, and we need them in our community. But we also need to make sure that we're doing it in a way that is as safe and as attractive as we can for this community. So I would ask that we hear from the landlord and perhaps the applicant, if they could give us some time to at least sit down and talk. There have been some things that have been raised tonight about the past, whether or not, you know, that the tower was properly built, whether or not we can address some of those concerns. I think it's important, or they will always be in question. There will be something that will always be attacked by our staff, by the council, by the community. Let's see if we can clear some of those things up, and then see if we can't take some steps to make this a better project for everyone involved.
Should we see if they want to speak tonight? Yeah, would you mind coming up? We, yeah, thank you for, first of all, being here and listening to all our neighbors, share their stories, share their thoughts. It seems to me that we need some time to work through this. What can you, what can you, how can you work with us on that?
So I, just to be clear, I represent the landlord, American Tower. So the owner, so we're not the applicant on this co-location request? And I can't answer the question tonight, but I will absolutely discuss it with my client first thing tomorrow morning.
Maybe the applicant can come up and...
Before, before, I'll have a question for the attorney from Madlin Matkins, if I could.
Yeah.
You mentioned that you're representing the tower owner. Several of the comments this evening were asked about the abandonment of the tower. Can you talk about the use of the tower over the last 50, 60 years, and whether or not it's been in continuous use and whether or not it in fact has been abandoned? I mean, I know occasional use is one thing, but it appears as though it was not in use for a substantial period of time. Can you comment on that?
So my understanding is that's incorrect. It has been in continuous use and had equipment located on it since the 1960s. It's been, it's had operating equipment on it and been in continuous use.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to understand, because I, one of the folks testified that they thought there was no electricity to the facility, and it's just now being installed. What was the use of the tower? Can you tell us what the use was?
It's been used as a cell tower and a radio facility. I don't have the details in front, I, thank you. I'm trying to answer... I'm trying to answer the question.
Yeah.
So, yes, I'm saying it has been in continuous use. I don't have, I don't have the details on exactly who the operators have been, but my understanding is the facility has been in continuous use since the CUP was.
Thank you.
Okay, if we could just give her the opportunity, ma'am, I, I think Councilmember Noblek is trying to, you know, have a dialogue with you, and it sounds like maybe you're not sure of exact details here. I think what's important is that we have a situation here that I think you can read the room. We're going to need some time to work with your organization on a number of matters that I think directly relate to your responsibilities as the, as the, as the landlord, with respect to the nuisance, all the construction traffic coming through, whether it's your responsibility or not. You are the landlord. We have a number of, of issues with the, that's been cited tonight regarding the nuisance, the defensible fire zone, the height, and just the numerous things. It's going to be in your overall best interest, I believe, if you guys will be willing to sit down with the city and go through this in complete list of issues and build a plan to address them. And, and that's really, I think, the ask. And I'm really imploring you to make, take that back with sincerity so that we can get some meeting quickly on the books to work, go through this list of, of concerns. Is that something that you can commit to tonight?
So if, if the question is, can American Tower work with staff to address issues or questions that have been raised tonight? Absolutely. Right, that's, and I think we've, we've been doing so and will continue to do so in good faith.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get to that. We'll get to that. I, I think there are a number of areas of responsibility that directly relate to you guys, like, for example, the nuisance. That's your responsibility. And I think you heard numerous examples, and frankly, that's a liability to your organization if that isn't addressed. So I think there is a significant impact to your organization as much as there is to this community to get these things worked out. So I wanted to just have you assure us tonight that that is something you can commit to in a, with good faith, to work to address these issues in a comprehensive way.
Well, like I said, American Tower is absolutely open and willing, and will continue to work with staff to address any concerns with compliance with the CUP.
Yeah. Maybe we could, can we arrange for a conference call tomorrow with your organization and our city staff? That's, that's the ask.
I, I would do everything in my power to make that happen.
Okay. Before we let her go, are there any questions or comments that you want to make to the, your worth, American Tower?
I'm, I'm a legal representative for American Tower, correct?
Okay. Is there anybody, any other things for her? Okay. Thank you for being here, and regardless of the outcome of your, can you touch base with the staff tomorrow and let, and give them a status report on, when we can get a conference call?
I can certainly speak with staff tomorrow. We have to.
I want to say we appreciate your name.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. And then, yes, sir, the applicant.
Yes, Norm McLeod, Dish Wireless. Yeah, you know, Dish is here to work collaboratively with staff, talk to Jonathan about potential tolling agreement. I'll take that back to the office first thing in the morning. I think that, you know, with the shot clock looming and the concerns about durations mandated by the FCC, I have to really think through it and find out what the gating issues are. And those gating issues are, the permitting of the site, is it a legal-conforming structure? Is it inoperable? Is it a telecommunications facility like? It is a communications facility, whether it's wireless or telecommunications or microwave. It is a communication structure. Dish Wireless does an analysis of, of a nationwide nature, looking at different structures. Utilities-type structures are ideal. They've been designated as such, they've been utilized as such, and then this one's 62 years old, or 60 years old, excuse me, 61 years old. I'm 63, so I'm like, I'm older than the tower. But in that, in that context, that's what we look for. We look for those vertical elements that are existing for us to piggyback our equipment on. It's been utilized, according to the client, that it has been in place for this many years, operating as such. Therefore, we are afforded, well, again, truth or not, we're going to find out through a records request, and we'll hopefully have some backup documentation, which satisfies the concerns. And again, I'm with you on concerns. Don't, don't, don't shout over me while I'm at the podium. I didn't do that to you. I appreciate it. In that, we will definitely dig down, drill down, find out where we stand in terms of this structure. Again, we don't want to go out up there illegally. We don't want to leave a black eye on Dish Wireless. We're here to work collaboratively. I've said that three times tonight, and I mean it. And I'm willing to work with everybody here, if they give everybody an opportunity to speak their point, their points, and then we'll come to the table and we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you just stay up there for a minute?
Sure.
My, my point to you would be the same as, as the legal counsel for ATC would be, can we put a, can you, as representing the applicant, put a pause on your application and, starting tomorrow, convene a meeting with our staff to identify, to go through all these issues, pull together a plan, voluntarily put a pause on your building permit? Can you agree to that tonight?
I can administer a tolling agreement for the duration of which, I, I can't tell you what the duration will be at this time. Could be maybe a couple of weeks, maybe to the end of the month.
We'll build a plan, is what I'm saying.
We'll figure that out. That's pretty open-ended. I don't want to commit to a specific date at, at this time. If I go back to the office, say, we have a tolling agreement in place, you know, we're putting our permits on hold, stop all work on Monday, I'll have a communication with Jonathan. We'll figure it out, and I'll give you a duration that's probably going to be within the month of November. But it'd be nice to have those records handy, so we can dig into those, see what we have. And I'll, obviously, there's existing permits out there now.
Let me justify, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
I think the process that I'm suggesting, for, if you, and I think you're saying yes to this, is if we could pause your application while we build a plan, which would include the dates, you know, a timeline for working through all the issues and identify all the issues. I mean, I think you've seen from the pictures, the traffic, the trucks, there's, the impact in the neighborhoods is substantial. And that really goes to the heart of being, you know, good faith. And I think what, that's what I think I'm hearing from the residents tonight, is can we put a plan together that while we're doing that planning, figuring out all the issues that have been addressed, and the construction traffic that's going on right now, can we pause? And I think I'm hearing you say yes, and maybe meet tomorrow with the staff to put the, start to put together a plan that we can then come back to the city with that addresses these issues.
I'll, I'll agree to identifying what you mean by pause. If there's work that's underway, that I'm not familiar with what's happening specifically in the rights of way. Those are different permits. Those are different encroachment permits. It's not an entitlement issue. It's more of the utility runs and power and fiber to the facility. Those are in itself separate from the actual Dish Wireless entitlement.
I understand what you're saying.
Antennas on the tower. So again, the discussion tomorrow will be to outline somewhat of a rough plan. Obviously, yes, the tolling agreement will be based on that. If there's going to be a tolling agreement based on the entitlements for Dish, I believe we've gone through the entitlement process. We've been granted entitlements. We're now on the permitting of the building permit process. And by federal mandates, by the Spectrum Act, Section 6409, that's inclusive, from the entitlements to the building permits, we should be complete within 60 days. It's, it's expedited. It's a fast-track process mandated by the federal government, and, you know, and Dish Wireless has followed suit to the EFR, the Eligible Facility Request of that application. So we've done everything we had to do. Staff has done everything they have to do. I applaud staff in following suit to these things, and actually contacting me to say, hey, can we have a tolling agreement to address some concerns? That piques my, my interest, because, wow, cities typically do not do that. They don't take, take the time to pull it, you know, carry it to the table and say, hey, look, we've got some concerns. Can we look at this and work it out? I'm willing to do that, but I need to identify exactly what the scope of that tolling agreement will impact.
And that's what I'm asking.
Okay? That'll be tomorrow morning.
Yes.
Between now and noon tomorrow, we'll have some kind of framework of what we can do to work with, with the city, with constituencies, and as well as to address these issues and concerns that are applicable to our scope.
Yeah, and you are willing to pause the processing of the billing permit while that plan is put together and then executed?
I will talk to that point tomorrow, whether we will pause it or not. I'm just saying, I need to identify exactly what we're talking about. And I understand my position.
But let me just be clear.
My position.
Let me just be clear.
I'm willing to pause it, yes.
That's the ask.
To toll the agreement, to toll, to toll. Yes, I'm willing to do that, but there will be parameters and scopes associated with that. It's very detailed. It's not just, we're going to stop work, and then it just goes on indefinitely. There's a drop dead date, and that drop dead date might be a week. It might be two weeks. But that's about as far as it can go. Really, we've gone this far. We've gone through the process as mandated, working with staff to get to where we are today. And for me to go back to, you know, the office and tell them in the morning, hey, we're going to stop the project, well, you know, I'd be looking for a job. So there's my pressure. My goal here is to bring broadband services to the community in the event of a fire, in the event of an emergency. You're going to want this broadband service, and that's what we're here to do. That's what Dish does. Okay?
So I appreciate your questions.
Just a sec, just a sec. So this, obviously, what we're talking about is a voluntary action on your part, after hearing the sincere, legitimate, valid concerns tonight regarding a number of issues that would impact the operation of your facility. It is in your best interest, I think, having you heard these, to convey those concerns to your team.
Absolutely.
That, you know, this is, well, how you want to phrase it, new information, whatever you want to say. But you have come under the, you know, the, after this hearing, new information from the community that is in your organization's best interest to address, and it may take some time to do that. And you were asked to pause while a plan is put together to address those legitimate concerns that are really, is in your self-interest as well. That's the ask. And so if you could take that message back, appreciate you being that messenger, appreciate you representing the concerns you heard tonight, and then getting with Jonathan tomorrow with your team on a conference call so we could begin to work through those next steps. But I'd like to leave the community with the impression that that's, that's the goal for you, that that's what you're going to do.
Here to get, have an answer of yes for both sides of the counter, and what that entails, we'll define that tomorrow. And then the tolling agreement will be a product of that, the tolling agreement will be a product of that discussion tomorrow.
Okay.
I just want to thank you for being here and for making yourself available for questions, and we appreciate it very much.
No, thank you.
I have a question of staff, if I, if I, if I could. Jonathan, this evening, a lot of folks commented on the, the process and how it came in suddenly, and there was no notification. When the permit was issued in 2023 to lower the tower to 70 feet, what was the, what was the notification requirement, if any, with that application?
Yes, thank you for that question. So that specific permit, so there's two permits at play here. The first one was to reduce the height to comply with the CUP. The second is related to attaching the panel antennas. So that first one was not part of an entitlement. It was a part of a compliance requirement. So the city notified the property owner that, per our records, the CUP, in this case of the County of Orange, they were out of compliance at that height. So we notified the property owner, but there's not a, a radius notification requirement that comes into play for building permits. So the, the end result or then permit was not an entitlement, wasn't a use permit, anything that goes through a public hearing process. So there's not a notification component to standard building permits.
At the time that application was, was submitted and the, and the permit was granted, did the staff do an analysis of compliance issues with fire safety, potential abandonment issues, things of that sort?
Yeah, so we have taken a look at those items the community's raised, those items, obviously. I'll touch on a couple of those. The first would be in regards to the fire safety item. I did have a conversation with OCFA. They have conducted inspections there on an annual basis for the past few years. The most recent inspection was in late October. And, and so my understanding, and I do believe we have a representative here if there are further questions on this front, but, is that they typically do those inspections in the fall, and it's, it's a once-a-year inspection. So on that side, that had been completed. Regarding the other compliance issues, we've heard that there are concerns about, you know, building permit finals or CFOs. The challenge, one of the challenges here is that the original approval was issued by the County of Orange, and so there's not a lot of permit history from the county that was available regarding the early era of this tower. And, and that's one component of how the city really pushed the property owner to reduce the height, as well as we requested, provide proof that you were given authority to increase the height beyond what that CUP was. There was no documentation to that effect. And so the city, knowing that the height of this tower in particular in that area has been a concern for a long time, was fairly aggressive in moving for that to be reduced to align with the original approval.
A number of folks have asked about what's on the tower. Do we know if there, how many users and how many companies are currently using that for that particular tower for communication purposes?
Yeah, there's not a lot of information on that. The, the city had a, the most recent permit that was issued was in 2017. So submitted in 2016, issued in 2017 for an antenna. Those drawings indicated one antenna, but identified in the existing drawings that there were a couple of other towers, or a couple of other antennas already on the facility. And, and then with the current round of drawings, those, those antennas are still shown as the existing condition to be removed with a reduction in height of the tower and the new Dish antennas to be added onto that facility.
Thank you. And I guess I have one additional question for our city attorney. Several folks tonight asked about the validity of the process, and my, I guess my question is, in response to those inquiries, if the original permit for the tower reduction, which has been issued and permitted, if it was found that there were misrepresentations regarding compliance, regarding fire safety issues or any issues, would, could that permit potentially be in jeopardy or be, be potentially revoked, or is there authority to revoke it, as has been suggested?
Well, I think I heard a few things here, but overall, you know, we have, the city attorney's office has looked into the community's concerns. We've researched, and at this point, we haven't found any grounds to deny the application. I kind of defer to Jonathan, but we also, to the extent that if we have a nuisance issue or whatnot, we can certainly, you know, provide due process and allow the, the permit to come into compliance, as I understand it. Does that make sense?
I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure. You mentioned a nuisance. What was the nuisance connection?
Yeah, so I think I heard kind of two different issues with your question. So I think as far as requiring the tower to become, to come into compliance with a permit, then we would give the, we, and the city has given the opportunity for the tower to come into compliance. As far as the process, the 6409 process, and whether the tower is, you know, an existing facility and whether it qualifies under 6409, at this point, we have, you know, we have looked into numerous avenues, and we haven't found any grounds to deny the application.
Thank you.
I don't think we want to have round two of public comment, but I can tell you that the staff is going to be here when we adjourn for you to have some one-on-ones. Can you do, can you take it there? Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So what about, so Jonathan, or I don't know if this is for Mr. Otamian, but it does seem to me that there is quite a bit of construction going on out there, and a lot of construction trucks, traffic, looks like temporary power poles, all the rest. Is that all permitted by? all the rest. Is that all permitted by the city? Is that all something that has been reviewed and permitted?
The city has received a number of complaints about the construction activities. Our building official and building staff have looked into it. Typically, what they've found is that the work that is being done is, does not require a permit, does not require permits to run underground low-voltage utility lines, which is the bulk of what they're doing. There have been some comments about where they're running these lines, getting access, and how they're getting access to these areas. To the extent that they are working outside of any easements, the city does, we don't have records of every single easement that may exist on property. So it is up to the property owners to know whether somebody is trespassing on their property. And if that is the case, that is something that the Sheriff's Department can assist property owners in dealing with. However, in looking at those issues specifically, the city's records do indicate that they appear to be working within prescribed easements.
Would it be, would it be appropriate to send one of your representatives out to that area tomorrow to be liaison to the community, listen to their concerns, have them, show them around to where the various activities are, have them observe the construction traffic, whether or not they're blocking driveways, whether they're blocking streets, and bring back a report to you guys to determine whether or not this is appropriate activity for that area? Is that a fair ask?
Yeah, since work is continuing, city staff is not going to write off any previous review that we've done. If there are continuing concerns, I have no problem sending staff out to investigate the current status of the construction activities and make sure that everything, as far as the city's, as far as the city's regulations allow our oversight, I'm more than happy to send somebody out.
I think that would be helpful, and also just as a liaison to the community, so that the community has, can express themselves to a city official with what their concerns are directly, and then that person can document them, bring them back, and you guys can review those. And I would, I would say to the residents, I mean, Mr. Temian's right, you would know on your property if you have easements, and whether or not you do or not. And if you don't, and you see people on your property, you do need to notify the city, you can notify the Sheriff's Department, that is within your right to do. And those easements are identified on your track map that you get when you buy your home. They're very clearly identified on your maps. So with that, I want to just say, to ask you, Jonathan, or Adam, did you have anything that you wish to say in?
Actually, I had a quick question before we wrap.
Yes.
One of the things that was mentioned was kids climbing up on this tower. If someone is hurt on that tower from climbing, who's liable for that?
I'm going to defer to our city attorney's representative, that's a legal question.
Yeah, and I would, I would have to look into that some more, but I'm happy to talk to you and the commission offline.
So Councilmember Emire, I think that's an excellent question. And I think maybe the way to handle that would be to refer that to our attorney's office and have them, as part of the, I'm hoping, this conference call tomorrow with both the landlord and the tenant, that our representative from the city attorney's office be present. And that would be one of the areas to pursue in the conference, in that conference call. Would be that question of liability, because to me, one of the most disturbing things I heard tonight is nuisance climbing on that. That is a significant risk to health, safety, and welfare that we need to take action on. And I would defer that to you and your office to make the appropriate determinations and work with the tenant and the landlord on that. Councilmember Emire, thank you. Did you have anything else? Councilmember Loffler, did you have any comments or observations to make?
No, I'm a stand, I don't have a microphone, but nobody's ever complained that they couldn't hear me when I was talking.
Mr. Noblock's offering you his.
Anyway, for the DISH Network, gentlemen, and I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, I've heard so many names tonight. And I just want to reiterate what Chairman Cosgrove was kind of talking about, about the optics of this. And I'll just keep it to one specific issue, and there's many issues brought up, they're all important. But when they were talking about, when the counselor also, the question was about the continuous use of the antenna. And she said, and I'm sure she's being very truthful, when she says, to her best knowledge, best information, that it's been continually used. Well, the person here that shared that information with you isn't here, so I know you're relating what you believe to be true. And I think DISH Network is going by that same information. So let's take that specifically. And let's say it turns out to be true. Let's say it doesn't turn out to be true, and it has been shut down. I don't think DISH Network wants to be tied to that as representing that, oh, it's been going on forever, and now it's continuing, when it wasn't. I think you want this to be as clean as possible when you're a neighbor to us coming into the city and working here. So I think this should be motivation, no matter what, to go along with Chairman Cosgrove and the rest of the Planning Commission. And I can't speak for the rest of City Council, I'll speak for myself. I don't see anybody shaking their head. So I will say that probably you would want this to come out as clean and to put a stop on this, a pause, we'll call it a pause, to whatever extent that is, to get this done as clean as possible, no matter how it turns out, would look the best on your company going forward.
I wanted to add one more thing here. And I think as a city, as staff, when we see these issues coming down the line, I know that we didn't have to do notifications. But when we know that they are going to be things that impact our community, just because you don't have to, doesn't mean you shouldn't. So I would just encourage our staff that as these big issues come forward, that we be proactive in how we communicate this to our neighbors.
Councilmember Emire, I think what you're bringing up is an opportunity for us to improve some of our processes. And that is exactly what the Planning Commission is designed to do. And so one of the opportunities we could do is look at some of our processes for the building permit process as it relates to these specific types of uses. And we could do a review and make some recommendations to staff on some things. And, because we do look at the granularity and say, well, not all building permits are the same. And maybe in some areas, we can identify those as highly sensitive and change some of our processes. So if that's sort of your suggestion, I would be on board with us, you know, working with the staff to take a look at those. So are there any other comments from my colleagues here tonight? Otherwise, we can move it, move along.
The thought, is there a saturation limitation? I mean, can they put these things up every 100 feet? Is there saturation limitation?
I can comment on that briefly. So there's, again, there's a variety of different ways that cell towers or equipment that is used for mobile service get installed. So some of them, again, are in towers, some of them are not. There's equipment on this building, actually, there's equipment in lots of different locations. There, the limitation is more so, so these facilities are allowed in all zones in the city, every zone. And the limitation on the city is going to be more so the reverse of that, where we can set, we can prescribe certain desired distances. But if the applicant, whatever network provider that is, demonstrates that that location is needed to provide service, then the city can't deny it, even if we do have a prescribed ideal distance in between them. So it's more the opposite side.
Has that been explored?
So we have that in place for small cells in particular. I know that some community members referenced like a 500-foot standard, you might have heard that before. That's, doesn't relate to this application, but other types of applications. And so the standard there is 500 feet from residences. What that does is it says, it's kind of a default, if you need to be at least 500 feet from a residence, or you have to provide substantial evidence that that location is necessary for your network.
Has that, that evidence of substantial need been provided? Does that apply in this situation?
It doesn't apply in this situation.
Right. So as I mentioned, if you guys have some additional thoughts or questions, I believe our staff is willing to spend a little bit more time tonight. So stick around and try and engage some one-on-one conversations and give them, you know, your, some of your thoughts. So, because I hope what you are hearing tonight is a willingness on the side of the applicant to work with us, to pause. So give the staff your thoughts. I think we should give the staff the opportunity to do that and go through that, you know, with them tomorrow.
I would like to add to that, is as we are asking staff questions, we know exactly where you're at. Give us a minute to digest this on your behalf. Just hold, that's what I would suggest. Let each guy here and go. Ask questions, we hear you.
I wanted to express, I'm sure collectively, our thanks for you coming out this evening. I know you have lives, kids, homework, places to be. And by you being here, you help us all make better decisions. So thank you for coming out.
Did you want to say anything? Commissioner McCann, did you have any thoughts or questions?
Sure. No, I appreciate, I appreciate everyone coming out. I think everyone was, provided really great information. I would say that there's, you know, a set of federal rules here in play that we don't like. And I'll be the first in line to say, I'm no fan of the federal government, okay? So, but staff is trying to operate and navigate within those rules that have been laid down from above. So be kind when you're dealing with them. They're trying to help you, and they're trying to help the city. So there's no point in coming at them with knives.
Vice Chair Kemp, did you have any? Okay.
That would be my same comment, for those of us who are up here and are working on state ADUs, you know, the additional dwelling unit in your backyard that some people want and some don't. I would call this the federal ADU, because it is federal regulation that we're working with, and they are the superior agency, just as the state and the county are above us. So this is a very difficult issue. There are some things we may not know. The federal government might want that tower for a certain reason, which they're not going to tell us, but yet they have a contractor coming in there. So there's a lot of questions that I even have tonight. But you do need to give, you know, your elected and non-elected, because we're non-elected, we're appointed leaders, a chance to get to some of the facts and issues.
Commissioner Crandall?
Yeah, and this is really for staff. In your discussions, if it turns out that the cell tower has been out of service, hasn't been properly permitted, press for the minimum size pole or whatever, rather than this climbable tower, which is, as everyone knows, is an eyesore. Because I know the applicant who's trying to put their equipment on the tower doesn't need anything this large. I mean, they could probably be on a 70-foot pole. So if that opportunity presents itself, and there's no way of not having it there, see if there's any way you can work that in.
Jonathan, any final comments before we adjourn?
No, other than I will stay around and I'm available to answer some questions. I know that this is a confusing process. There's a lot of, even just within wireless permits alone, there's a number of different paths and types and all of that. And so I'll be available to respond to those questions for a while here.
Very good. Again, just to echo what we've all said, thank you for everything you've done to be here tonight. If you're a veteran, happy Veterans Day for Saturday. And with that, I believe we can adjourn. Do we need a mo-
What's the process of your background?
I'm going to have to ask the staff what they're, if they want to talk about next steps. I think the next steps are evolving. You know, it was, it's been, let me just say it this way. Because of the comments made tonight, it's changed. The process has changed. So what was going to be a Monday deadline now is not. And so I think the staff needs some time to work through that. And maybe after your, we adjourn, you can figure out maybe a couple key representatives that maybe can be in touch with Mr. Lightfoot, and then that, those key representatives could inform your larger group. Because this is dynamic, and there's no way to really answer that tonight.
I think it's best to handle offline. Okay. Thank you all. Do we need a motion?
Okay. And what are we adjourning to? Just our regular Planning Commission meeting?
Since this is a study session, you adjourned to the next study session, which is the same day as your next meeting, the first meeting of December.
So I will move that we adjourn this meeting of the Planning Commission to the next regular study session on December the 6th, 2023, here at City Hall.
Second.
Second and by-
Second.
Chair Protem, McCacken, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.